And we'll wait for everyone else. Um, hello, everyone. Welcome to today's Salt Lake City Council formal meeting. As you can see, we are continuing to hold our meeting remotely due to the declarations of emergency related to the pandemic and earthquake. While we hold our meetings remotely, we are happy to have you connecting with us online or by phone. Thank you for joining us. We will begin with a moment of silence as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. When we are done, we will turn our audio back on. Thank you. Um, I will cover our public meeting rules before our public comment sections of the agenda, and this will bring us to item A4. The council will approve the work session meeting minutes of Tuesday, June 9th, 2020. I'll look for a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Councilmember Valdemoros. I will go ahead and roll call this. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mono?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdemoros?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That passes unanimously. Um. This brings us to item A5. At this time, the council will consider adopting a joint ceremonial resolution with Mayor Mendenhall declaring March 1st as COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Memorial Day in Salt Lake City. I will turn the time over to Councilmember Dan Dugan, who will read the resolution at this time. Councilmember Dugan?
Sorry, I won't have my screen on. Oh, there it is. Thank you. Designating the first Monday in March as COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Memorial Day. Whereas the first Monday in March has been designated as COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Memorial Day, and whereas COVID-19 is an illness caused by a virus that can transmit from person to person and has spread across the world, creating a global pandemic that is having catastrophic effects on human life, our community, and our economy. And whereas, to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, observance of public health orders is to social distancing and stay-at-home have created challenges for small businesses, workers, and schools which are working to comply with limited resources. And whereas, school districts, teachers, students, and parents are grappling with the challenges of distance learning and working to prevent any potential learning loss due to not being in person. And whereas, local and state governments, health departments, and public servants have taken bold actions to protect residents, support struggling local economies, and find innovative ways to provide services. And whereas, in response to the rapid spread of COVID-19 and stay-at-home orders, essential workers have stepped up to provide critical services to help protect our communities and save lives, sacrificing their own health and safety. And whereas, COVID-19 has had a disproportionate impact on low-income communities and communities of color, exacerbating inequities already prevalent in our systems that we must address as a nation. And oh, missed my place. And whereas, the symptoms and severity of COVID-19 can vary dramatically by individuals and the long-term health implications for survivors is largely unknown, as many suffer with lingering side effects of the disease long after they are no longer test positive. And whereas, more than 2,333,446 people worldwide and 466,465 people in the United States have lost their lives due to COVID-19. And United's in, in Salt Lake City alone, more than 137 community members' lives have been lost to the deadly virus. And whereas, each life lost to COVID-19 leaves a hole in the hearts of loved ones, family members, and community. And whereas, public health guidance and policies targeted at prevention such as social distancing, wearing masks in public, frequent hand washing, and staying home help mitigate the spread of COVID-19, prevent illness, and lessen the burden on individuals in society. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Salt Lake City Council and Mayor of Salt Lake City designate the first Monday in March as COVID-19 Memorial Day in Salt Lake City in remembrance of those who lost their lives and in honor of those who are forever marked by COVID-19 and continue to suffer from the impact of this virus. Adopted this 16th day of February 2021. Signed, the Mayor and the City Council.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Um, I will look for a motion adopting this resolution.
And I'm sure the council adopt the joint resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wharton and a second by Councilmember Valdemoros. Is there any discussion? I will roll call. Councilmember Mono?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wharton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdemoros?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, I also want to thank Matt Curtis and his team of Smart City Policy Group and MarkedByCOVID.com for bringing this resolution forward for Salt Lake City to join 60-plus cities designating the first Monday in March as COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Memorial Day. That brings us to our public hearing section of the agenda. Items B1 through B8 will be heard as one public hearing. As a reminder, we are taking comments in the order of each scheduled public hearing. General comments will take place after the scheduled hearing items. We are accepting comments through WebEx, and for those whose only option is to call in, staff will be monitoring a separate telephone line. The City Council has always had rules of decorum that are created to advance the legitimate government objectives of having an orderly, efficient meeting that moves through the agenda and gives everyone the opportunity to voice their opinions. We had these rules of decorum when we were meeting in person. It is important to continue with this practice. In person, we have the added benefit of being able to see each of the commenters, which helped us to get to know our constituents and engage more meaningfully. As we continue to meet electronically, we still want to provide a space for people to feel comfortable and safe to participate. In order to achieve this, our rules of decorum is from the moment you arrive into our virtual meeting. To help facilitate our comment period, please be respectful. Again, we want to create a safe space for everyone to have their voice heard. Please avoid yelling or making racial slurs, obscene, or defamatory remarks. The council respects all points of view, and we welcome new insights. However, using foul language and personal attacks make the public comment forum uncivil and intimidating for others. In addition to this being a public forum, this meeting is also being broadcast on television and the internet. Because of that, the council has decided to more strictly enforce the use of profanity. If you feel you cannot use, excuse me, if you feel you need to use profanity to express your point, you're welcome to email council members or call our comment line at 801-535-7654. Based on that, this will be considered your advanced, your advanced warning against the use of profanity. If someone uses profanity, we will mute your microphone, and you will forfeit your opportunity to address the council tonight. In addition, just as we would ask for your name in our, in our in-person meetings, please provide a first and last name prior to speaking in the public comment period. To limit disruption, your first and last name given cannot include a message or violate our rules of decorum. If your registered name doesn't meet this requirement, then our staff will be happy to help you in, to assist you in the chat feature to gather that information from you. If you are unable to give a first and last name that meets this requirement, again, our staff would be happy to direct you to another forum because your message is important to us. Robert Nutzman from our staff is helping to moderate this meeting. He will be messaging with the attendees to coordinate. Please monitor the chat screen for information and/or feel free to message our staff with any questions. Again, his name is Robert Nutzman. Robert will take your first and last name. If you are unable to give a first and last name that does not include a message or violate our rules of decorum, our staff will direct you to other channels of communication. Libby Stackstone, another staff member, will be calling the names of those who wish to comment and unmuting lines. Once we open public comment, Libby will announce three names at a time so that people can have some notice and be prepared to speak. When it is your turn to speak, the meeting host will unmute your line. Please state your name, and the two minutes will begin. At the two-minute mark, the host will announce time, and your microphone will be muted. Again, there are several ways to get in touch with your council members, and we do value your opinion and want to hear your voice. If you are unable to complete your full comment in the two minutes allotted, please feel free to mail us at PO Box 145476, Salt Lake City, Utah 84114. Email us at comment, excuse me, at council comments at slcgov.com or call us at 801-535-7654. If you do not wish to speak and are here just to listen, welcome and thank you. Just message our staff to let them know, or when Libby states your name, please let us know that you're just here to listen. We have two public hearings today. Our first public hearing combines item numbers B1 through B8 as one hearing, and they are all grant applications. Item B1 is a request from the Engineering Division to the Utah Department of Transportation, UDOT, for the local government on-system bridge rehabilitation replacement funding for the bridge at 1500 West, 650 North. B2 is a request from the Emergency Management Division to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program, the BRIC program. I'd from the Engineering Division to the Wasatch Front Regional Council. If awarded, this grant would fund the 700 North Corridor improvements between Redwood Road and 2200 West. Item B4 is a request from the Department of Community and Neighborhoods to the Wasatch Front Regional Council. Item B5 is a request from the Transportation Division to the Wasatch Front Regional Council. If awarded, the grant would be used for the Kensington East-West Neighborhood Byway Phase 2 project to enhance, enhance bicycle and pedestrian uses. Item B6 is a request, is a request from the Transportation Division to Salt Lake County, the Utah Department of Transportation, the Utah Transit Authority, and the Wasatch Front Regional Council. Item B7 is a request from the Planning Division to Salt Lake County, the Utah Department of Transportation, the Utah Transit Authority, and the Wasatch Front Regional Council. Item B8 is a request from the Salt Lake City Fire Department to the State Bureau of Emergency Services and Profurness. Before taking any comment, I will first turn the time over to Sylvia Richards, council staff, policy analyst, to give a short introduction. Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The city applies for and receives grants which help to support and fund some city programs. Each grant application is reviewed and then receives a public hearing which gives the public an opportunity to comment on them. Tonight, as you mentioned, there are eight grants. Would you like me to go through them again, or are you satisfied with the descriptions that you gave, Madam Chair?
I believe that we are fine to go forward, but next time I'm letting you read all of that.
Thank you.
With that, I will ask Libby to start with our first public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so for our first set of public hearings, our first speaker will be Greg Sanchez, followed by Keenan Wells, and followed by Amy Hawkins.
Hi.
Greg, you are unmuted now, and you may begin your comment.
Great, thank you. My name is Greg Sanchez. I'm a resident of District 1. And as I just wanted to express my support for Grant 1 and 3 specifically, which affects 600 North, 700 North. Um, I just think that, that investing into this infrastructure here in the city is great for safety, um, and help, you know, with the high-speed, uh, the high speeders that attracts in the area. It's great for school kids, great for recreating. I think it can really create something that's a more of a community, community center and something really great for taking a step forward and creating a more equitable transportation network. So I just wanted to express again my support for Grant 1 and 3, and I look forward for the city to keep investing and applying for more grants to create more investment into the, into the West Side specifically, to Rose Park, Fair Park, and Glendale area. So, thank you.
Okay, next up, we'll have Keenan Wells, followed by Amy Hawkins, followed by Annie Charles. Keenan, you are muted, and you can begin your comment now.
Hello, this is Keenan Wells. Uh, I might have been put in the wrong area. I'm talking about the 200 South rezoning. Um, if that's still correct, I'd like to proceed. Hello?
Yes, sorry. Um, we, I believe that you would probably want to give your comments during our general comment section.
Yes.
So we will be getting to that a little bit later in the agenda.
Okay, sorry for the confusion.
Nope, not a problem.
Keenan will have a staff member reach out to you to, to clear that up. Thanks.
Okay.
Um, so followed by Keenan then, who will be speaking later, we'll have Amy Hawkins, who will be followed by Annie Charles, who will be followed by Monica Hilding. Annie, you are, Amy, excuse me, Amy, you are unmuted, and you may begin your comment.
Thank you. Hi, council members. My name is Amy Hawkins. I am Chair of the Ballpark Community Council, and I signed on tonight to make comments in support of the Kensington Avenue Byway Project. I understand that TAP grants are one source of funding for this project, but I wanted to remind council members that we've applied for CIP funds for this project for two years in a row. In the past three years, several violent homicides and other crimes have been committed in the ballpark neighborhood on or closely adjacent to Kensington Avenue, including most recently a triple shooting and homicide this past December. By making it into a neighborhood byway, we hope to deter crime by making, by bringing more users to a transformed and safer Kensington Avenue. In addition to support from two neighborhood community councils, we also have letters of support for the project from the Utah Pride Center, Pam Peterson, Principal of Innovations High School, and Sam Hanson, our former Salt Lake City School Board Representative. Sam wrote that this project supports our mutual goals as a neighborhood and a school district. Infrastructure improvements that would promote student pedestrian safety and retain families in our neighborhoods. This proposal also speaks to a neighborhood that has gained additional pedestrian-oriented residents. Quite a few new higher-density housing projects have recently been completed in Ballpark, but between State Street and I-15, our neighborhood has very limited green space, and we need safe routes to recreation. We only expect this trend towards urban infill to continue in our neighborhood, and some of us are really pleased about it. We want more eyes on the street, feet on our sidewalks, bikes in our bike lanes, living healthy lives, and frequenting our neighborhood businesses. Thank you for your time and support this application.
Okay, so now we will have Annie Charles, who will be followed by Taylor Anderson. Sorry, just one moment.
It looks like Annie may have left the meeting.
Yeah, I'm not seeing her. Okay, so, um, then we will move to Taylor Anderson. Taylor, you are unmuted, and you may begin your comment.
Great, thanks. Yeah, my name's Taylor Anderson. I am a co-founder of the Streets Design Nonprofit, Sweet Streets, and I live in this neighborhood, Liberty Wells, where the Kensington Neighborhood Byway would be created. It is currently planned for in the Bike Ped Master Plan, and we wanted to applaud the Transportation Division for staying on this and for getting creative and finding funding. So, um, if anyone's unfamiliar with the neighborhood byways, they are supposed to be low-traffic, low-speed, safe neighborhood streets where people are comfortable enough to walk and bike with children. And this one's notable because it would actually create a safe route across two state roads, State Street and 700 East. Those are actually, will become safe routes to Whittier Elementary for kids living west of State Street, which is Salt Lake City's most dangerous road, and for Hawthorne students that live east of 700 East, which is another UDOT dangerous road. It is, um, will also create a welcome and rare crossing on 700 East. Currently, there are half-mile gaps, which is a 10- to 15-minute walk for able-bodied people. So I'm hoping that the council will not only support the grant application, but I'm also hoping that as we head towards budget season, we look for ways to make the funding for these, what could be a network of neighborhood byways, a useful and safe network, make it a little bit easier for the Transportation Division to fund and implement what is planned for in the Bike Ped Master Plan. So, thanks for your support.
Madam Chair, uh, those are all the speakers that we have for items B1 through B8 this evening.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, that will bring us to our second public hearing, item B9, regarding a resolution, um, a bond authorizing the establishment of short-term borrowing program for the benefit of the Department of Airports. Before we begin taking comments, I will turn the time over to Russell Weeks, our council staff policy analyst, to give a short introduction. Thank you, Russell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you said, this is a public hearing on a resolution to authorize Mayor Mendenhall to approve a line of credit to continue the construction program at Salt Lake City International Airport. The line of credit is for a maximum amount of $300 million at any one time. The City Council adopted the motion on January 19th to approve the resolution. Ultimately, debt for the project, for the airport project is repaid with revenue generated by the airport. I should note that Airport Finance Director Brian Butler is listed as a panelist here, and he can clarify anything I've just said, or, or if you have any questions you'd like to ask him.
Sorry, I got all my buttons mixed up. Um, thank you, Russell, for that, and I think with that, we'll just see if, Libby, if we can start with our first public comment.
Madam Chair, there, um, we actually don't have anyone registered for this public hearing. No speakers.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, with that, I will look for a motion on this item.
Madam Chair. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Or Councilmember Valdemoros, whoever wants to.
Oh, okay, I'll do it. Um, Madam Chair, I move that we close the public hearing and refer, wait, hold on. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a second on this?
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Wharton and a, um, a second from Councilmember Dugan. Any discussion on this? Great, I will go ahead and do a roll call. Councilmember Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Mono?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdemoros?
Yes.
Did I get everybody? Everybody kept jumping around on my screen.
You didn't get me, but I'm a yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Wharton, and I'm a yes. That passes unanimously. And I know why Jen's on the, on the screen. We also need a motion for items B1 through B9.
But it turns out that it was a good thing that you guys didn't close the public hearing because we actually do have a caller who was on for general comment who wants to comment on the grant items. And so if you're willing to allow her to speak, um, we can do that before you guys take a motion to close.
That's perfect. And see, I thought I was gonna read your mind, Jen, because you always read mine. But it's still something else. Yeah, that would be great. We'd love to hear from our caller.
Okay, so our caller is Monica Hilding. And Monica, you are unmuted. You can begin with your comment now.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I'm calling about number four grant application, congestion mitigation air quality, um, 2022 to 27, um, with the Utah Inland Port Authority. And, um, I'm concerned because the community of neighborhoods can, C-A-N, agreed to be a pass-through agent for the Utah Inland Port Authority, giving the Utah Inland Port Authority responsibility for oversight, management, and implementation of this project. My concern is the lack of transparency and the public opposition to the Utah Inland Port Authority, and to give them this power would be, I think, um, a very poor move. Thank you.
Libby, is that everyone for these, for the grant items?
Uh, Madam Chair, yes, that, that would be everybody.
Great, thank you. Um, with that, we, I will look for a motion.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move that we, uh, close the, or continue the public hearing, on items B1 through B8, or excuse me, I'm sorry, not, I move that we close the hearing and refer them to a future consent agenda for action.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wharton and a second by Councilmember Valdemoros. I will go ahead and, is there any discussion on this motion? And I will go ahead and roll call. Councilmember Valdemoros?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wharton?
Yes.
Councilmember Mono?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you. We are, do, 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 do. Now, on to section C. We have no potential action items today, and that brings us to, um, section D of our agenda, questions to the mayor from the City Council. And Mayor, I would hope, like we talked about in the, the work session, I didn't forget this time, if you could give us a little update on the storm that we anticipate coming in throughout the evening.
Yeah, there's been a storm on the forecast, but it's been elevated in the last several hours by the National Weather Service, Salt Lake County, and I think some other agents. Salt Lake County and I think some other agencies are looking at delayed opening times. Salt Lake City's all virtual, so there's no delays in our opening times at the city. But we're hearing that UDOT is asking people to stay off of the highways, off of I-15, I-80 as much as possible through 10, or after 10:00 PM, so that the snowplows can do the work of trying to make those roadways clear. In Salt Lake City, our office is in constant contact right now with our snowplow fleet, and they are out in force, they're pre-salt-ing, and they feel like they can stay ahead of it right here in Salt Lake City. Still, though, we're asking people, if you can, please stay off the roadways to make those plows work, to make the plows more easy, easily. And I think the storm is scheduled to go through late morning tomorrow. Some pretty astonishing snow totals throughout the Wasatch Front in Salt Lake County in particular. So we'll throw a link up in just a second where people can track where the snowplows are in Salt Lake City and with that, National Weather Service link to their current updates. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I think it's awesome that we can track our snowplows, by the way. So are there any other questions or comments to the mayor from other city council members? Great, thank you again, Mayor, for being here and for that update. With that, we will go to our general comment period. And you all get to hear me tell you all of the rules again, just in case anyone forgot or just logged on. We do have these rules to make sure that everyone feels safe and comfortable and able to have their voice heard. So I am going to go through this long colloquy once again, but it is important for us that we make sure everyone follows these rules of decorum so we can have a good, productive, and efficient council meeting. We are accepting your comments through WebEx. And for those whose only option is to call in, staff will be monitoring a separate telephone line. For anyone just joining us, as I shared before, the city council has always had rules of decorum that are created to help us conduct an orderly, efficient meeting that moves through the agenda and gives everyone the opportunity to voice their opinions. These rules are no different than when we meet in person and are important to create a space where people can feel safe to provide their comments and differences of opinion, even when we are meeting virtually. In order to achieve this, our rules of decorum extend from the moment you arrive into our virtual meeting. To help facilitate our comment period, please be respectful. Avoid yelling, making racial slurs, obscene, or defamatory remarks. The council respects all points of view and we welcome new insights. However, using foul language and personal attacks make the public comment forum uncivil and intimidating for others. In addition, this public, to this being a public forum, this meeting is also being broadcast on television and the internet. Because of that, council has decided to more strictly enforce the use of profanity. If you feel you need to use profanity to express your point, you're welcome to email council members or call our comment line. Based on that, this will be considered your advance warning against the use of profanity. If someone uses profanity, we will mute your microphone and you will forfeit your opportunity to address the council. In addition, just as we would ask for your name in our in-person meetings, please provide a first and last name prior to speaking to the public in the public comment period. To limit disruption, your first and last name given cannot include a message or violate our rules of decorum. If your registered name doesn't meet this requirement, our staff will use the chat feature to gather that information from you. If you're unable to give us that information, our staff would be happy to direct you to other forums of, to other forums, because your message is important to us. Robert Nutzman from our staff is helping to moderate this meeting. He will be messaging with attendees to coordinate. Please monitor the chat for any information and feel free to contact through the chat any of our staff with questions or issues that you may be having. Libby Stockstill, another staff member, will be calling the names of those who wish to comment and unmuting lines. Once we open public comment, Libby will announce three names at a time so that people can have notice and be prepared to speak. If you do not wish to speak and are just here joining us, welcome and thank you. And please message our staff to let them know when the, or when Libby says your name, please just let us know that you're just here to listen. When it is your turn to speak, the meeting host will unmute your line. Please state your name and the two-minute timer will begin. At the two-minute timer, at the two-minute mark, the host will announce time and your microphone will be muted. We recognize that two minutes is not a lot of time and your comments are important to us. So if you feel that you were unable to give us your full comment, please reach out in any number of ways to give us your full comment. You can mail us at P.O. Box 145476, Salt Lake City, Utah, 84114, email us at council comments at slcgov.com, or phone us at 801-535-7654. Of course, you can always reach out to your individual council members or any one of us individually. With that, Libby, the show's all yours.
Thanks so much, Madam Chair. So our first speaker this evening for the general comment will be Tyler Slack, followed by Jen Colby, followed by Rich Wilcox. Tyler, you are unmuted and you may begin with your comment now.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Slack. I go by TK. I've been an employee in Salt Lake City for the last 20 years with the Special Olympics, the State Board of Education, and most recently, the Utah Jazz. And during my time working there, I've had a lot of opportunity to interact with our unsheltered brothers and sisters. I think it's a perfect segue that the mayor gave us a snow report. And right now, we're dealing with our unsheltered brothers and sisters out in the snow, recently moved and moved and moved. And I'm trying, I'm here today just trying to do it differently. Last year, I was writing emergency contact information on my arm and linking arms at a protest at the Salt Lake City County and County Building. And I, little did I know, I was actually hurting that population and re-traumatizing them. I've been working with Ty Bellamy with Black Lives for Humanity movement for the last two weeks, starting with helping to move Camp Last Hope. And watching these human beings being herded out into the cold when the Health Department and the Police Department are there to protect and save human lives is just, I don't understand it. And what I'm asking is for your help. We are out there trying to help these people survive, and it is hard, hard work. And I can tell you, I'm already feeling hopeless because I can only help so many people, and it's not a lot. And so I know it's a complicated issue. I know you all care about these people. You care about human beings and human life. But we're not acting like it right now. We need to do something different. And it is complicated. I'm learning more and more and more, and I want to learn even more. And then in the meantime, I'm just gonna keep on helping, but please stop moving them. Thank you so much.
Okay, next speaker will be Jen Colby, followed by Rich Wilcox, followed by Cindy Cromer. Jen, you are unmuted and you may begin with your comment now.
Thanks, Libby. Jen Colby, Council District 4. I support what Tyler just said. And I also am commenting to oppose amending the master plan and zoning map for the five properties located in the 9th East block of 200 South and on Lincoln Street as requested by the property owners. I live across the street. I especially oppose any attempt to use a development agreement to somehow rationalize this last-ditch effort to rezone. This is not the way to add potential housing units, especially after a very negative planning staff report and a unanimous Planning Commission no vote a year ago. I'm a strong advocate for truly affordable housing, both for rent and for purchase. Affordability is a formula addressing income and wealth inequality is also needed. Spot upzoning increases underlying property values. This gives owners evaluation windfall and harms long-term affordability. If you're in a hole, the first rule is to stop digging. But tear-downs and boarded buildings keep happening. Existing older buildings remain the largest pool of affordable housing, yet the city does little to protect them or provide tools to property owners to rehabilitate housing and maintain affordability at scale. The city's biggest need is deeply affordable units. This requires more public investment and subsidies from all levels of government. The city's landlord business licensing does not even require owners to report rents, evictions, and occupancy rates. As a 2020 census enumerator, I was surprised to find large numbers of vacant units in many buildings, seemingly off the market for no reason. Legal short-term Airbnb-type rentals are widespread and unforced. Finding ways to get existing units back on the market should be a priority. These property owners have existing options within R2 to add units, such as remodeling to legal density and adding ADUs. If the property owners want to develop their proposed market-rate apartment complex, they should buy appropriately zoned parcels in Salt Lake City or elsewhere and proceed. Real estate is an active market. I ask the council to vote no. Thank you. And my husband is gonna be on the same line.
Okay, Rich Wilcox, you may begin with your comment now.
I'm Rich Wilcox. I'm a Council District 4 homeowner. I live across the street from the properties located in 900 East block of 200 South and on Lincoln Street that are under consideration for upzoning. I oppose amending the master plan and zoning map as requested by the property owners. This has been a lengthy and stressful two-year process for our neighborhood. And the lack of maintenance and poor management of these rental properties has been an ongoing issue for much longer than that. However, that problem is not relevant to rezoning. Neither are the owners' stated redevelopment intentions. What matters are the criteria and the city ordinance, and a fair and consistent application of them. The planning staff report was very clear that the application does not meet the legal standards in the zoning ordinance and gave a negative recommendation. The Planning Commission agreed unanimously in a formal hearing and no vote on February 12, 2020. This should be the end of the story. Many developers accept negative Planning Commission votes and adapt their plans accordingly. Nothing that drove the Commission's no vote a year ago has changed. And a rezon of this parcel would be baseless and bring a raft of negative consequences for this neighborhood. City council should follow and support the city's own codes. It should back the professionalism of the planning staff who prepared the staff report, and it should uphold the unanimous vote of the Planning Commission against rezoning these properties. Please take the time to read through the extensive public record and comments already submitted. They clearly explain why there's no justification to overturning the Planning Commission in this case. I ask the council to simply vote no and reject any development agreement proposals outside of the current zoning and planning status of these parcels. Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker will be Cindy Cromer, followed by Keenan Wells, followed by Sanaya Nazeva.
Hi, Cindy. I sent you a copy of my remarks a short while ago. A few of you know that I've spent 27 years working in a mental health center with children who were identified in our culture as having severe behavioral problems. One of my biggest learning experiences during that time was how behaviors can become connected in complex ways, forming chains of adaptive and also inappropriate behaviors. I would think that I was reinforcing an appropriate behavior only to figure out later that the appropriate behavior was preceded and connected to inappropriate ones. How in the world is this information about chaining, the behavioral term, relevant to my current focus on affordable housing? Because the city is dealing with complex behaviors from the developers of housing. Just like I assumed that I was reinforcing the last behavior, the city is accepting a pittance toward affordability or worse, a commitment to more market-rate housing alone, assuming that a good behavior has been reinforced. In fact, developers have complex chains of behavior in the process of creating additional housing. Some of those behaviors can be harmful to tenants, reduce available affordable units, and can increase the cost of housing. I am suggesting that the city cannot assume that the only reinforce, when only reinforcer is the last in the sequence of the chain. Other events function as conditioned reinforcers in the process. And by reinforcing the last link in the process, the city is actually supporting actions which include evictions, increased rents, and demolitions. I know each of you well enough to believe that you do not intend to reinforce those actions. I never intended to reinforce the behavior of a five-year-old who pinched the child sitting next to her, but that's exactly what I was doing until I paid very close attention to the chain of her behaviors. Her good behavior of sitting quietly was always preceded by the negative behavior of pinching the child next to her. She was using the negative behavior to get my attention and then earn a reinforcer. Thank you very much.
Next up, we'll have Keenan Wells, followed by Sanaya Nazeva, followed by George Chapman. And Keenan, you are unmuted and you may begin your comment now.
Hello, this is Keenan Wells. I have, I grew up next to the area to be rezoned on 200 South. Been a resident of District 4 for 30 years. I've watched the management of this area for 30 years and the disregard of the owners to their tenants. It's worth noting that, well, this is somewhat besides rezoning, the, they have, during COVID, made an effort to evict or effectively evict most, if not all, of their residents with a few people left over in one of the houses. These are not responsive, responsible owners. It's already been brought up that there are two professional votes against this rezoning. This, okay, if these people were not able to maintain historic housing using historic tax credits and a massive demand for low-income housing, there's no reason that they will remont, will responsibly administer the new complex which they propose to build if the area is rezoned. There's no, okay, it's not worth rewarding bad behavior. Okay, as mentioned before, this is an active market. There are other places they could build this. They want to build this here so they can monopolize or so they can capitalize on the misery they have caused to their former tenants. Okay, in addition, just as far as zoning goes, okay, proposed plans would have parking go onto the Lincoln Street. It's a single-lane street. Okay, adding, okay, adding additional traffic is not going to help anyone. The, every proposal we've seen from these developers is wildly out of care.
Okay, now we will have Sanaya, followed by George Chapman. Sanaya, you are unmuted now and you may begin your comment.
Hi, I'm Cassinia Knazewa. I am the executive director of the newly formed Nonprofit Nomad Alliance. I just wanted to give a huge shout-out and thank you to Chairwoman Amy Fowler for coming with us to our Nomad Supply Drive last Sunday and for Chris Worton for texting and saying he wanted to attend and really for you guys caring enough to really see the depth of the destitution on the streets. Like so many other callers here, I beg you guys, please do what you can to stop the abatements. I saw a grown man cry because he had access to some land but could only take two. And we had just helped so many move and they were just laying there on the side of the street, like pulled weeds, crying, so many people crying. They just didn't know what to do, what to go. We were told that they were supposed to move again. It's just really destabilizing. It's traumatizing for an already traumatized, triaged situation. And I also ask you to please, let's work together for permanent solutions because the current situation isn't helping anyone. The city is getting a lot of hate and negative attention because of these inhumane actions, and the people are suffering. So in memory of Brandy, who recently died at Darren Mann's camp, trying to keep warm, we urge you to please help us build a tiny house settlement, rezon some land, and work with us to, and all of these other groups to really create a permanent solution so people no longer have to suffer, so the city can go on policing other more egregious matters, like all the rapes and other things that are going on. These people need some compassion, and I thank you all for helping. And as I said before, please regular trash pick-up set some of the settlements and bathrooms. And thank you so much for, for doing all this hard work for all of us and for caring. Love you all.
Bye.
Okay, next up, we will have George Chapman. And... George, you are unmuted.
I thought so. Okay, the Fair and Peers study is not public and there are so many questions and complaints on parking. And that should be expected to result in a significant change to the parking proposal. So it is not fair to call a public hearing on the ordinance when there will obviously be change and without the public able to see all of the information that you have, and you have it right now, but we don't have it. Be fair and respectful to the public. Do not set the parking ordinance public hearing date tonight. And I agree with Jen Colby's, Colby's comments. And finally, ADUs are not a solution to the affordable housing crisis in Salt Lake City since only 100 are in process or being built and, or have been built. And as Cindy Cromer pointed out before, the RMF 30 proposal will hurt low-income renters. The solution is to agree that mixed-use housing is best and allow the 80% of the city property that does not allow housing to have housing. I apologize for repeating myself. But the solution is there are over 50,000 workers in the International Center. And except for the hotels, there's no housing. Result is that this city encourages driving and air pollution. The International Center could handle and should be allowed to build tens of thousands, thousands of housing units. Salt Lake City should allow housing on the 80% of the city that does not allow housing. Please stop encouraging air pollution worse than the inland port. Put housing in big employment centers and they need parking. I need to emphasize this. Please stop encouraging air pollution worse than the inland port. Thanks for listening.
Madam Chair, we do not have anyone else registered for the general comment period.
Great. Thank you to everyone who commented today. We appreciate you engaging and leaving your comments with us. And Libby, thank you for handling all of that. Yes.
I think Jen Colby, when she spoke, said her husband was also trying to make a comment, but they were on the same line. Did anyone else hear that?
He actually, he did comment just directly after her.
Oh, okay, thanks. That was
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great. With that, we sorry, I lost place in my agenda. We are on to new business, item E1, regarding the building inspections for modular or factory-built structures. I will look for a motion on this.
Chair, I move the council adopt the ordinance, changes related to the modular building construction and inspections.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers, a second from Councilmember Valdemoros. I will go ahead and do, or is there any discussion on this? Excuse me. I'll go ahead and do a roll call. Councilmember Valdemoros.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wharton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mono?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That passes unanimously. That brings us to item F in our agenda, unfinished business. Item F1 is a resolution awarding U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security CARES Act grant funds. So it's HUD giving us CARES Act money. The council will consider adopting a resolution about funding recommendations from resident advisory boards and the mayor and approving an inter-local agreement between the city and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I will look for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the council authorize an inter-local agreement between the city and HUD and approve an appropriations resolution updating the 2020-2021 action plan to set forth in Exhibit A, awarding CDBG, ESG, and HOPWA funds, except for ESG number four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do, is there any discussion on this? Excuse me. I have a motion by Councilmember Rogers, a second by Councilmember Dugan. Is there any discussion on this? Before I do a roll call, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege myself and just say thank you to Can and Hand and the mayor for really, we, we as a council sort of put everyone through a wringer wanting to make sure that this money was going to the places it needed to go. And Hand and Can worked very diligently and quickly to get the turnarounds that we were hoping for so that we could get this money out into our community as quickly as possible. I look forward to seeing the, the benefits that this four and a half million dollars will have for our communities that have been greatly affected by COVID. So thank you to the administration and to Can and Hand. With that, I will do a roll call. Councilmember Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdemoros?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Wharton?
Yes.
Councilmember Mono?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That passes unanimously. With that, we are on to
Madam Chair, I want to continue this. I think, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I need to have Councilmember Johnston recuse himself so I can move on to adopt number four ESG.
I apologize. Thank you. I love it when staff pops in because it, it means that like something, something went wrong. So we will ask Councilmember Johnston to recuse himself and continue with the rest of the appropriation of this money.
I'd like to briefly recuse myself before you can do that to me. Thank you.
Great.
Get out, Andrew.
Now that he's removed himself from the meeting, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to the council approve an appropriation resolution updating the 2020-2021 action plan to set forth in Exhibit A for Volunteers of America Application ESG number four.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rogers, a second by Councilmember Dugan. Is there any discussion on this? With that, I will go forward with the roll call. Councilmember Mono?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Wharton?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdemoros?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That passes unanimously. With that, can somebody please tell Andrew he's welcome back in our meeting? We'll, we'll wait just a couple of minutes to let Andrew come back. This is where we need the Jeopardy theme song music.
We done?
With that, yes.
Thank you. Sorry, Jen.
I wanted to say something as far as I, okay, good. Never mind. Great. Thank you, everyone. We're on to F2, which is a joint city council mayor resolution applauding the work of the Salt Lake City Hostage Negotiation Team and Director Jessica Waters. We are doing, this is a joint resolution with Mayor Mendenhall applauding the work of, of this team. Mayor Mendenhall presented this resolution in a work session last week, two weeks ago, one of the weeks prior to today. And we, the, the council fully supports this resolution, but because we did not have a formal meeting at that time, we did not have the ability to adopt and present it last week. So we wanted to bring it back and vote on adopting this resolution. And I also just wanted to take a moment to thank the the hostage negotiation team and Director Jessica Waters. And I think that Jessica is on the line with us. And we thank you for being here with our, our council meeting. And after we adopt, we'll turn it over to you if there's anything you'd like to say. So with that, I'd look for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the council adopt the joint resolution applauding the work of the Salt Lake City Hostage Negotiation Team and Director Jessica Waters.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rogers and a second by Councilmember Dugan. Is there any discussion to this item? Then I will go ahead and do a roll call. Councilmember Mono?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Wharton?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdemoros? And I am a yes. This passes unanimously. Jessica, thank you for being here. If we were in person, we would all take a picture and you'd have the resolution, but we're not. So take a screenshot of this perhaps. And I not only want to thank you for your stellar work in this particular situation, but for the stellar work that you and your team do throughout our city with our social we had a wonderful briefing about it about a month ago and you and I have talked about it. I, I truly appreciate the work that you're doing for the city and particularly for our, our communities experiencing homelessness in many ways. So with that, if you'd like to say anything, I'll turn the time over to you for a few minutes.
Yeah, thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. Um, yeah, I think my team would really appreciate this as well. It's, we love what we do. It's a lot of fun. Being a part of the hostage negotiation team is very unique. And I think it's just really important to recognize too, all the coordination that goes into a call like that, that I may have been the person on the phone, but there was seven other detectives behind me, supporting me, and then I'm working alongside SWAT and making sure we're all on the same page. So it's pretty cool to be a part of such a big team effort, knowing very well that it can be really tricky. But yes, I appreciate all the support. And my team of social workers and myself just love doing crisis response and enjoy working for the city. So thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we will move to our next item, which is our consent agenda. I will look for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wharton and a second by Councilmember Mono. Is there any discussion to this? And I'll go ahead and do a roll call. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Wharton?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdemoros?
Yes.
Councilmember Mono?
Yes.
And Councilmember Johnston?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That passes unanimously. And with that fabulous team, we are done with our meeting and this council's formal meeting now stands adjourned. Have a wonderful evening.